I have on mute.
Okay, well anyways, so we have this check. This is the refund or the extra on the loan that they paid off.
All right, great. Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission Meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. For cases that require public hearings, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then we will receive. I'd ask everyone, go ahead and mute. Mute their Zoom. So back to first, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, please take the role.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Dean. Mr. Freed is absent this evening. Ms. Heron.
Here.
Mr. Canar.
Here.
Mr. Calp.
Here.
Ms. Messina.
Here.
Ms. Wrangler.
Here.
And Mr. Warner.
Here.
We have eight in the quorum.
All right, item B, approval of minutes, March 15th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one thing that needs to be corrected on the vote for the sports zone PUD. Instead of Ms. Wrangler abstaining, it was myself.
Thank you.
Everything else looks great.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Canar. I would move for approval of the minutes.
Second. All right, motion and a second approval with the change from Commissioner Messina. Chris, please take the role.
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mr. Dean.
Abstain.
Ms. Heron.
Hi.
Mr. Canar.
Hi.
Mr. Calp.
Hi.
Ms. Messina.
Hi.
Ms. Wrangler.
Hi.
And Mr. Warner.
Hi.
Motion passes seven zero with one abstaining.
Declaration of conflict of interest, ex parte communications by members of the commission or staff.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, I will be recusing myself from action item D1. Currently working on an existing project with that applicant.
Any others? All right. Move on to action items. Item D1 is a public hearing of Z21/04 by Atlantic Signal LLC requesting to amend the district zoning map on properties located at 115 Southwest 12th Street and 1122 Southwest Jackson Street from M3 Multiple Family Dwelling District to D1 Downtown Mixed Use to allow for production and assembly of communication equipment. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll wait for the slides to come up. Next, please. Okay, so this is a, an application by Atlantic Signal to rezone the property from M3 to D1 downtown. And this zoning change is being proposed to allow for development of a production and assembly facility. So production and assembly is fairly broad. That's intentional. This is not. What's being proposed is with, is, uh, the scale of it is such that it can be done under what we call artisan manufacturing, which limits the area of the building and the property, which can be used for the production and assembly, and is also limited to production and assembly that does not produce offensive noise or odor or anything like that. And staff is recommending approval of the zoning change. Next, please. So this, uh, this is the zoning map and the balance of the block that this sits on is mostly zone C4 commercial with some M3 to the south of the subject property. So you might ask why staff advise the applicant to apply for D1 zoning as opposed to C4 zoning? And the reason for that is, is D1 is more appropriate for the context of downtown, the mix of uses, the pedestrian nature of downtown, and it's also more consistent with, with the ongoing planning and the land use and growth management plan, which is our comprehensive plan as opposed to C4. As you might be aware, on the east side of the block facing Kansas Avenue, Atlantic Signal is now remodeling the building and building some parking areas for this use on the other side of the block because that's on a separate, or separated by an alley. It's not, it's a separate zoning lot. To the west of the site is, is the Y. It's owned M3 indoor, it's an indoor recreation use. To the north, on the other side of 12th, is an eight-story apartment building and it's on C4. And south, as you can see, is M3 and, oh, and I1 is mostly, or on I2, excuse me, and is mostly vacant. Next, please. These are some photos of the site. The one on the upper left is in the staff report. As you can see, the upper right, that's the Y. I, in the staff report, there's a typo. It says YMCA and it's actually the YWCA. There's a pretty key difference there. The bottom photo, that's looking across the alley to the east to the building that's, that's being remodeled right now. Next slide, please. So the future land use map is a part of the land use and growth management plan. And as you can see, this site on the future land use map is designated downtown mixed use. So the proposed D1 zoning is consistent with the land use and growth management plan, that future land use map. Next slide, please. So this is the, the pending downtown master plan that you have seen. And this area that this is located in is called the Tower District. And in the downtown master plan, there are two optional visions. And option one anticipates potentially a, a sports complex on, uh, between Quincy and Monroe Streets. It's kind of a bright green color. Option two, in the event that the, that catalyst project doesn't happen, this is an optional vision for the, or an alternate vision for the area. It doesn't really affect this property at all. This property is, is designated downtown, uh, mixed use, uh, in either case. The property, as you can see, it's in the southwest corner of the proposed Tower District in the master plan. And it's designated for downtown land uses. So it is consistent with the pending downtown master plan as well as the current land use and growth management plan. The rezoning that's being proposed will better facilitate the construction of a building for uses consistent with the adopted plan or plans. Next slide, please. So just to conclude again, where staff is recommending approval, the proposed D1 zoning is compatible with the existing and desired future character of neighborhood. The subject property is located at the area, edge of an area planned for mixed use redevelopment, and the proposed zoning will help to implement those plans. The proposed D1 zoning will also allow the owner to move forward with plans to expand his production and assembly operation on this site. And overall, the proposed zoning change will result in development, which will contribute to the vitality of downtown and the neighborhood. Next slide. And that concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. And I believe the applicant is also here to answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Hall or staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Calp.
Mike, just a quick question. I think you used the term artisan manufacturing.
Yes.
And I haven't, I have to admit, I did not look at the matrix, but is that distinguished from light manufacturing?
It's a, yeah, it is distinguished. It's listed separately as a primary use in the land use tables. I believe it's under the commercial section of the tables. And the reason for that is, it was, it was actually something that was added to the code about three years ago as a way to allow flexibility and allow redevelopment of some of the buildings in downtown and in some of these areas where that use would be appropriate.
Okay. But D1 does not allow light manufacturing as a permitted use, is that right?
That is, that is correct. So artisan manufacturing is limited to 6,000 square feet of a building or no more than 80% of the building, I believe it is.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we will ask the applicant or their representative if you have a presentation or any comments for the commission this evening. I know I see Mr. Balinsky on from Schmidt Beckenbloyd and also Mr. Boyd from Schmidt Beckenbloyd.
Uh, this is Joshua. I have nothing add, to add to the presentation. Uh, Mr. Hendrick is here as well, the owner. I don't know if he has anything to say or add to the presentation.
I don't have anything to add either, Josh.
I agree.
All right, any questions for the applicant commissioners? All right, hearing none, this is a public hearing. We will officially open the public hearing and ask for any public comments. Each speaker, please let us know if you would like to make comments and we'll give you four minutes to address the commission. And we can go in order of whoever's interested. Is anyone on the call this evening for public comment for this item? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, further discussion?
Mr. Chair. This is Commissioner Wrangler. I was just going to toss out there that I would be voting in favor. I think this is consistent with the, the plans we've looked at. I don't have any concerns.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I was involved in the design of the 12th Street project adjacent to this lot and I know there were, at the time, questions about its future use, and this seems to work great with the adjacent process that's already in place there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Calp.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am, sir.
Well, I would move approval of the rezoning application from M3 Multiple Family to D1 Downtown District.
Commissioner Dean, my second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Chris, will you please take the role?
I'm gonna start from the bottom. Mr. Warner abstains. Ms. Wrangler.
Hi.
Ms. Messina.
Hi.
Mr. Calp.
Hi.
Mr. Canar.
Hi.
Ms. Heron.
Hi.
Mr. Dean.
Hi.
And Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Motion passes seven zero with one abstaining.
All right, we'll move on to action item D2, Windward Estates. 2A is a public hearing of PUD 21/01 Windward Estates PUD by Cronos Construction LLC, David E. Watson, requesting to amend the zoning map on property located approximately 150 feet west of the intersection of Southeast 45th Street and Southeast California Avenue from planned unit development PUD C4 commercial uses to PUD M1 two, two-family residential uses on approximately 5.4 acres and C4 commercial uses on approximately two acres to allow for residential duplexes and unspecified commercial uses. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application to change the zoning of, of this 7.5 acre area of land from PUD C4 commercial uses to PUD M1 and C2 uses, as you said. I think the, the important thing to understand here is C4 commercial is, is a relatively intense level of commercial use. This, this happened, this was zoned this way quite a long time ago and has never been developed, really. And so this is being proposed to be mostly residential. And M1 is, is really primarily, it's two-family residential district. And C2 is, is commercial, more of a community or neighborhood level of intensity. And staff is recommending approval of the zoning change. Next slide, please. So this shows the area, that part that's, that's, would be under C2 standards. And then the light kind of yellowish color would be the, that part of the development that is, that is under an M1 type of standard. The, the reason for the PUD versus a straight zoning of M1 is to allow lots smaller than the minimum lot size allowed under M1 zoning. And to allow this to exceed the density of six units per acre as limited under M1. In exchange for getting that higher level of density and a smaller lot size, the PUD includes conditions regarding building design, landscaping, and maximum driveway width, so driveways do not dominate front yards. Next slide, please. The PUD master plan would also refer to a certain design. And what the note says is that any development on the residential lots shall be of this design or a design that's approved by the, by the planning department. And so this is a two-story duplex design. Each unit has three beds, two baths, and a single car garage. As you can see, the garage entries are split, so they're separated, they're, they're not combined, which kind of affects the character of the area of the street. I think I mentioned earlier that there are notes on the PUD master plan, there, these are requirements regarding those driveway widths, maximum width of three, 30 feet cumulatively and landscaping along the 45th and California frontages. There are also notes regarding fencing, a fencing requirement, which would normally not be required. So fencing would be required along the south and west property lines. Next slide. These are photos, of course. The upper left is a photo looking from the north onto the site. And then the photo on the upper right is what the area looks like, north of the site on the north side of 45th. Lower left, it's the east side of the site, looking onto the site. And then the lower right is across the street from the site. Next slide, please. Here's the zoning map. As I mentioned earlier, uh, this is a rezone to a lesser intensity from generally C4 commercial to a mix of M1 and C2 land uses. The current zoning allows commercial uses of a high intensity such as auto sales, auto repair, heavy auto repair. The proposed residential zoning is an appropriate transition from C2 and C3 zoning to the RR1 zoning to the, to the south and west. And by the way, this property borders on the edge of the city limits. It's right inside the city limits, but the lands to the, to the west and to the south are outside city limits. Next slide, please. So this is the Land Use and Growth Management Plan, Future Land Use Map. So what you see in the middle there is what's called a commercial node. And a commercial node, the idea there is that intense commercial uses should be concentrated around the intersections of two, uh, major streets. Usually it's two arterial streets, but it could be an arterial and a collector. And then the idea being that commercial uses should not proliferate along the length of those streets. They're kind of contained within a node. That, that is good because it's less disruptive to the arterials for carrying traffic. And it also means that there's more concentration of the commercial activity rather than being dispersed and diluted along, along street frontage. So what this zoning does is it actually works more toward this policy and this direction from, from the plan than the current zoning does. Next slide, please. I don't know why that's in there. So please disregard those two slides. Thank you. That's, that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions you have.
Commissioners, question from Mr. Hall?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Calp.
Just, Mike, just another real quick question. By granting the variant, by granting the PUD, that carries with it the, the variance from the density requirement, is that correct?
That is correct.
So there's nothing here that has to go before the BZA?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? It does look like we have someone representing the owner with us this evening. Randy, any presentation or comments from the owner's perspective?
None at this time.
All right. This, this is also a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing and ask for any public comments. Each speaker, let us know if you're here to talk about this item. We'll give you four minutes to address the commission. I don't see anyone extra on the call. Anyone on for this public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, further discussion? This, yeah, it does seem to follow that commercial node transition from the intersection to the residential more to the southwest. So I, I think this makes sense and I'm, I'm not surprised we're seeing more potential housing with the current housing shortages across the, the community.
Mr. Chair, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to, um, of approval with the proposed rezoning from planned unit development PUD C4 commercial uses to PUD slash M1 two-family residential uses and C4 commercial uses.
Commissioner Canar, all second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, commissioners? Chris, will you please take the role?
Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Mr. Dean.
Hi.
Ms. Heron.
Hi.
Mr. Canar.
Hi.
Mr. Calp.
Hi.
Ms. Messina.
Hi.
Ms. Wrangler.
Hi.
And Mr. Warner.
Hi.
Motion passes eight zero.
Move on to action item D2B, P21/02 Windward Estates Preliminary and Final Platte by Watson Real Estate Development, Inc., David E. Watson, comprising 7.54 acres and proposed as 20 two-family and single-family residential lots and one commercial lot located approximately 150 feet west of the intersection of Southeast 45th Street and Southeast California Avenue, all being within the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas. Mr. Hall.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so this is the accompanying associated plat, uh, associated with the, the PUD master plan that you just acted on. Again, 7.4 acres located at the edge of city limits. Next slide, please. Just quickly, oh. I just, I put this on here. I thought it might be useful to see where this is located relative to the city limits because the other maps don't really show that very well. But as you can see here where this is located, uh, it's at the edge. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a preliminary plat and final plat. And for those who are not really have a lot of experience looking at this type, these types of proposals, these plats, uh, the, the PUD was a specifically regarding zoning. And the plat is really, it deals with things that aren't all that well addressed in zoning, things like the sewer and water and street infrastructure and, and the way that the lots are laid out, their dimensions, and it provides a level of detail that a PUD master plan does not provide. So this, this plat consists of 20 residential lots ranging in size from 6,200 square feet to 14,400 square feet. It has a density of 7.6 dwellings per acre for the residential portion of the plat. The plat includes one commercial lot. And there's a large stormwater management easement on the commercial lot. There's also one tract at the southwest corner of the property for stormwater, specifically for an extended dry detention basin. And this is the preliminary plat. So here's the final plat. The final plat is, is the form that gets recorded with the register of deeds. And this is it. Next slide. And that concludes, uh, staff's presentation. We're recommending approval of the plat and, and and from this point, you make a recommendation that goes to the governing body and their primary action is to accept any street dedications or public utility easements. Thank you.
And Mr. Hall, you had just a few notes. Mr. Hall, you'd had just a few notes in the, in the staff analysis, some labels and acceptance of the stormwater management report. Those are still valid?
Yes, now that I've unmuted. The stormwater management plan is, as I understand, has not yet been completed, completely accepted. And we'll make sure it gets accepted before it goes on to the city council.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cal.
Mike, that, that detention facility in the southwest corner of the parcel, that, that's not a public dedication, right? It, it's, it remains private property?
That's, that's correct. So the, the owner in this situation, I think the owner intends to retain ownership of all the lots. So the owner would, would retain that. If this was like a typical residential subdivision where all the lots are sold to individuals, there could be a possibility of forming some kind of homeowners association or something to own and maintain the, the the tract, the detention basin. In this case, the developer will retain ownership of it and be responsible for maintaining it.
Yeah, and I, I can't make out all the plat notes, Mike. Is that covered in the, as in a note as well?
Yes, it will be. And there's also, it's also covered in a the stormwater management plan.
Okay.
And then they also adopt some kind of maintenance plan. So it's pretty technical. It's pretty elaborate even beyond the plat, what, what is approved for the stormwater management.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Any other questions, commissioners? Randy, any comments from the applicant this evening?
We're working on final comments on that stormwater management plan and nothing beyond that.
Any questions, commissioners? Thought I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner Warner, I would make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat phases for Windward Estates subdivision, including the three notes that are listed.
All second. This Commissioner Dean.
Motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Chris, you please take the role.
Hey, Mr. Warner.
Hi.
Ms. Ringler.
Hi.
Ms. Messina.
Hi.
Mr. Cal.
Hi.
Mr. Canar.
Hi.
Ms. Heron.
Hi.
Mr. Dean.
Hi.
And Mr. Armstrong.
Hi.
Motion passes eight zero with none abstaining.
Moving on to item E, communications to the commission. Mr. Finder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only communication is just an update on some previous cases that are going to the governing body. Tomorrow we'll be presenting the mass downtown master plan for discussion. And hopefully that will then be back on for action on May fourth. That same May fourth date, we will probably be or they will probably be hearing the sports zone P U D as well. So just in case you want to track those, that's where those are. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any final comments, commissioners? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.